Good evening and welcome to the March 8, 2021 Board of Education Meeting for the Cedar Rapids Community School District. The meeting is now called to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the agenda of Monday, March 8, 2021 Board of Education Meeting be approved as set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
All second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Timinski?
Aye.
Director Reesinger?
Aye.
President Humbles?
Aye. Tonight, we have four public hearings: Jefferson High School Auditorium Seating Project, Coolidge Elementary School Demolition Project, Grant Wood Elementary and Wilson Middle School ADA Restroom Project, and Franklin Middle School Rooftop Unit Replacement Project. Board Secretary Day, have we received any written correspondence related to any of the public hearings on tonight's agenda?
President Humbles and board members, we have not received any written correspondence, nor have we received any pre-registrations to address the board this evening.
Okay, with that, we will now officially, officially close our public hearing. I will now turn the meeting over to Superintendent Bush for her report.
Thank you, President Humbles, and I will share my screen so that we can do some celebrations together. All right. I could just get a thumbs up, make sure that that's viewing okay. Great, thank you, everyone. A great to see you this evening and welcome community members who are also able to view from their virtual seats. Many things to celebrate, these are just a few of the highlights. March, early March always brings the end of, well, some folks are really happy to say goodbye to winter, however, it also concludes some of our winter activities and sports throughout our district, as well as just so many things happening this time of year in regards to registration and whatnot. So just want to do a few highlights. Just a huge congratulations to our academic decathlon teams from across our system. Several students from both Kennedy and Jefferson High School individually placed. And also, congratulations to the entire Jefferson High School academic decathlon team for winning the state competition. This was their 21st consecutive win, and which makes them eligible for continued competition from a national lens. So congratulations to our students who worked so hard for this academic competition. Very proud of you and their coaches and all the family members who support that work from across our system. In addition, congratulations to Mississippi Valley Conference honorees. We had 13 students alone from Boy Swimming be honored with MVC honoree work, and that is beyond just being an athlete, that is also about being a student and their commitment to their studies. So congratulations to those athletes, and there will be more to come from the conclusions of our winter sports. Everybody's worked so hard, especially in seasons that had to encompass indoor accommodations for safety precautions through the pandemic. And I just want to take a moment to thank all of our coaches and all of our athletic directors, all of the student athletes, and our parents and families who supported a very challenging season. Fall, of course, was a challenge, but winter was challenging with weather and indoor accommodations. And so, just a shout out to all the teams and all of their efforts. Last week, we've got some exciting news, and this was published last week. And so, thank you Executive Director Phillips from the high school and all of our high school principals who worked very closely with Alliant Energy Powerhouse to find a way and a means to host graduation this year. So our 2021 graduates will have an in-person graduation. There will have to be some very strict safety measures. Thank you to our high school administrative teams and leadership teams alongside that Alliant Energy Powerhouse willing to put in the efforts to make a safe graduation for in-person opportunity. And of course, that will restrict attendance, however, we will be able to livestream those graduation ceremonies and bring some pomp and circumstance, literally, that we didn't have quite the opportunity for last year. And so, just happy to share that news with the community and certainly with the board this evening. And there are details on our website about the times of those graduation ceremonies, but that is something that is a heavy lift. And just one year ago, my colleagues and friends and community members, we were facing a very, very long spring break when things were shut down. And here we are, a year later, and every day, we just get a little more entrance into our continued opportunities for our kids. So thanks to all the team members for things that they've put together for our students, and we certainly look forward to sharing more opportunities yet this spring. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Well, that was quite a bit of good news. And so, thank you for sharing that information, Superintendent Bush. Do we have any board reports?
President Humbles, I have a brief legislative report. So most of you know that last week in Des Moines was the funnel week for legislation that was making its way through the House and the Senate there. In order to survive the funnel, a bill had to be passed through Subcommittee and Committee in the chamber where it originated. So if that doesn't happen, then typically, we call those bills dead, although they're not always really dead. So, but at least we've, we know that some of them have been slowed down considerably. So just a few things that are still on our radar. Charter schools, that bill did pass out of the House Committee, I think Thursday, last Thursday night, so that's something that we'll be watching. The good news is that the voucher bill that was in the House looks like, that, that bill is dead, but there is a version of it that has passed through the Senate. So we're still watching it, but we're hopeful that-
The voucher bill that was in the House looks like that, that bill was-
But we're hopeful that the voucher bill is, is done. Another thing we're still worried about is preschool funding. You may remember that byproduct of the school funding left preschool $7 million short. We've been told that that will be fixed at some point, but perhaps not the full $7 million, so we're watching that. Also, the supplemental funding, it was about $27 million, I believe, for COVID relief is still up in the air, so we'll be watching that one. It looks like the 1619 Project Bill, the one that prohibited the use of the 1619 Project in curriculum in schools, it looks like that bill is dead. So there's, there's some good news. So that's what's happening in Des Moines on the federal level. You've probably all heard the American Rescue Plan passed the Senate. It looks like it will pass the House tomorrow, that has a substantial amount of money in it for schools that can be used in quite a variety of ways. So that's, that also is really good news for us. Thank you, that's my report.
Thank you. Are there any other board reports?
President Humbles, I have a board report. I visited, as a board member, visited Cleveland, Coolidge, Garfield, Harding, Kenwood Leadership Academy, Wilson Wright, and the Accounting Department, and have submitted notes on points of pride from all of those places into a board report and distributed to board members for review.
Okay, thank, thank you. Any other board reports? Okay, moving on to communications, delegations, and petitions. Board Secretary, do we have any speakers registered to address the board this evening?
President Humbles, board members, we do have two speakers for this evening.
Okay, I'd like to remind those who have requested to address the board to please state your name and address for record when called. You will be, you will be given five minutes for your remarks. Board Secretary Day will serve as your timer and inform you when your time is up. Additionally, in order to abide by the open meetings laws, I'd like to remind our speakers that there will be no dialogue between board members and the public during this time, except to clarify the nature of the questions or comments from the individual speakers. Laurel, will you call our first speaker?
Sorry about that, just getting the timer up and ready. Our first speaker this evening is Amy Newell, and I believe Amy is with us, so go ahead, Amy.
Hi, thank you for allowing me the time to speak. My name's Amy Newell, I live at 1133 English Lane Northeast, and I'm a preschool teacher at Wright Elementary. I'm kind of here just to advocate for our program. I, along with 11 of my colleagues, have been surplus due to cuts to our early learning program. Our model currently consists primarily of two preschool rooms at each school, and each room is served by a general education teacher along with a general education para, and then there is a special education teacher and a special education para who alternate between the two rooms. So we support 20 kids, 15 general education students, and then we have five kids who receive special education support. So the proposed changes would eliminate that special education teacher position, and I understand our budget is not what we'd like it to be, but I just feel like right now, between the needs of our kids, we need, we need three people in those rooms. So what would happen with the proposed changes is that we'd keep the one teacher, who would be a dual gen ed teacher and special education teacher, and the classroom para, and then there'd be a special education para who would go back in between the two rooms. So essentially, what that means is up to 20 kids would be supported by one teacher and one para. That might sound adequate to some, but the kids in our rooms have many needs. We have many kids who are not potty trained, and they need to be changed at school. That often means that we're taking them to a different part of the building to change them, because we don't have bathrooms in our rooms and all of our classrooms. And so that would leave the classroom with just the one adult and the rest of the children. Oops. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I can't see-
Yes, we can.
Thank you, sorry about that. So our students of special education are often developmentally delayed. They start at three years old, anytime throughout the school year, and I've had kids as young developmentally as 18 months. So these kids are working on skills that are very different from the skills that we're working with the majority of our students who are trying to get ready for pre, for kindergarten. We're working on things as basic as making eye contact, responding and communicating with others, transitioning from one activity to another. In my own experience over the past four years, my classrooms have often had at least two kids who need to be constantly supervised in order to ensure their safety. They put things in their mouths, they might eat things that aren't food items, they climb shelves and elope in the classroom or the playground if not carefully monitored. With our current model, it's felt increasingly more difficult to meet the needs of all of our students and our classrooms, and I'm afraid that reducing that position is going to lead to a reduction in the quality of the program, but also just make it hard to keep some of our kids with our highest needs safe. So I know that many members of the board know the importance of preschool. We know that that critical brain development occurs during the ages of birth to five, and we have an opportunity to provide really great quality experiences that will help them to grow and develop, that will help our kids through high school and beyond. We also have the opportunity to work on those school readiness skills that are as basic as how to follow routine, how to get along with others, how to sit and listen to a story, not to mention those academic skills that will help our students in later grades. If we're not teaching that in preschool, our kids are going to have to learn that in kindergarten and beyond, and we know the academic challenges faced there now. So in my opinion, I really feel like we should be expanding our preschool opportunities rather than reducing them. As I said, it looks like I won't be teaching preschool next year, and I just want to say this has been my dream job, I love this job. I love working with our students, I love working with my colleagues, and I want the kids and the teachers who are going to stay in early learning to be set up for success. The proposed model, in my mind, raises some safety concerns, as well as concerns for the ability for our teachers to effectively teach our kids. So I'm just really asking, on behalf of my colleagues and the kids, to please make sure that they are set up for success next year. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. I'm sorry, and, and thank you, Amy, for your comments, it's much appreciated. Laurel, do we have another speaker?
Yes, tonight, we have Tanya Johnson, and she will be our final speaker.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Tanya Johnson, and I live at 3816 Riverside Drive Northeast. I'm speaking for CREA, but actually speaking more for Froda today, which is our para union group. Hold on one second while I get my notes. All right, first, I want to say just a quick thank you to everyone in our district that has made it possible, Lynn County Public Health, as well as our nurses that have made it possible for us to get our vaccines. Many, many, many of our educators, as well as others working in the school district, have been able to get that first vaccine, and I know most of us are looking forward to getting the second. The second part, as bargaining has started for many groups, I want to share a story of a para. The para said it was okay for me to share this story. I was called in as a resolution team facilitator to represent a para, and during this meeting, the para asked a question about why bus attendants make more than paras do. I don't remember the exact amounts, but I think it was that bus attendants make $15 an hour, and paras make $12 as a starting wage. The para shared, I really like my job and the kids, but I can't live on this. I have $12 in my bank account right now until I get paid on Friday, which was only, which was five days away. The job I do is important and necessary, and some don't want to do it, as I do toileting with students and have to clean up bathroom messes. I love the kids, but just don't understand why my job isn't paid as much as a bus attendant or even custodian or food service. I live with my mom and take care of her, and when I am sick, I have to go to the doctor. I have, and have to go to the doctor, I have to go to the free clinic. I asked why that was, and they said that, oh, I asked why that was because I know that they get the single health plan from the district as part of the benefits. The para said that they do, but they don't have enough money for the co-pay or for prescriptions if they don't go to the free clinic. Working closely with paras through ISCA and NEA, I was aware of paras fighting for a living wage. I had heard of paras that needed to work two and three jobs in order to make ends meet for their families. In Cedar Rapids last year, paras earned a 28 cent raise to make their starting wage $12.20. It is unacceptable that we have employees living below the poverty line because they want to work with students and support those students. Our paras have bargained for several years to add additional holidays to help them stay in paid status over a week break, because just taking one to three days without pay can mean something isn't getting paid in their home. As we go into bargaining and look at places to cut for our budget, please don't cut our least paid employees, please think about increasing their pay to a living wage. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya, for sharing that information. Now we're moving on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that a board member would like to pull for a comment, question, or a separate vote?
President Humbles, I, I have just one thing that I'd like to pull, just for some clarification. It is BA 21-011, it's part of the policy manual review, page two, the participation in the bargaining and meet and confer process. And I just need probably some clarification for my own understanding. It seems clearly that this policy has bearing on how we negotiate with our bargaining groups. So I'm just wondering if we remove this provision from our, our policy manual, will that have any impact on how we negotiate or who we negotiate with? Is there some impact here that maybe we're not seeing that we should be thinking about? I guess is my question.
Thank you for your question, Director Garlock. Just note of clarification, this is a regulation, not a policy in the policy manual. When the Policy Review Committee looked at this regulation, we look at all of them as, as it relates to the legitimacy and their relevance. We came to the realization that this current regulation is not mandated by law, and the team actually doesn't even require board approval. There's no requirement under the law regarding the makeup of the team, it's an administrative decision on who will represent the district at the negotiations table. It could be one person, it could be a team. We don't want to restrict or place limits on the team. Oops, so sorry. Hang on just a minute. I'm sorry. That was our timer that went off. Anyway, the board's role when it comes to negotiations is really during the exempt sessions, at which point we talk with you about strategies, but because there's no mandate or anything in the law that talks about the makeup of a team, we really didn't feel that it had much relevance anymore, and so that's why we were recommending that it no longer be in the manual.
And just as a clarification, the negotiations team, so the bargaining units, they still have whomever they want on, on their team. This is really the administrator, administrative groups, and, which sometimes change from year to year, just on who's available. So it was just a process that's certainly in place in, in the regulation, and we're going to always have a team, so it just was a, maybe not a necessary articulation of what we're going to do within practice.
Okay, that, that makes it much clearer to me. Yeah, that basically, this is just in, involves the administration side and who's on the team. Okay, thank you.
And I had the same question that Cindy had here, and just, so the, the team is made up from an administrative perspective, but does it typically involve principals or things like that? And, you know, my, my question wasn't so much about the board approval piece of it as much as it was, you know, how do we ensure that we have staff involvement as well as upper administration?
And the staff is usually on the bargaining, in the bargaining units too, within our unions, and then usually on the administrative side, we make sure that it's multiple lenses from multiple people within the system to support that process. Yep.
Thank you so much.
Just to follow up on that, those questions, was there any input from the bargaining units before this policy or regulation change, or was this just from the Policy Review Committee?
The Policy Review Committee does have people who would represent those groups. So for example, we have some principals who are on Policy Review Committee, as granted they're administrators, but they're, they're part of a, a meet and confer group as well, or administrative group as well, so that would be the additional lens. But no, we did not present it to the bargaining teams.
And I, you know, if they haven't had any comment, or you haven't had any comment from them, you don't expect it to really change the process much in the future?
I'm not expecting it to change the process at all. I really do think it's just not a matter of having to have it in policy as a regulation, but I don't, I don't see the process changing at all.
Any other items or?
President Humbles, I would request that item BA-21-270 be pulled for a separate vote.
And that's the tabulation for the Dell Chromebooks?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other? I'm sorry, did someone say something?
Hang on, I've got dog here. I just wanted to ask a question about the personnel report, and I saw that we had a resignation from our homeless specialist. I'm assuming that position is planning to be filled once we find an acceptable candidate, is that correct?
Yes.
Not in there.
Yes.
I'm, I'm just interested, maybe as a board, sometime when we bring someone new on, and maybe just hearing an update on that program in general. I just think it's important, especially given the economic situation of the last year, for the board to be, you know, as informed as possible in case, you know, I know that there's families out there who need help, and just want to make sure that we are able to make sure we're doing everything we can in that area.
I, I think it's been a while since we've had a presentation around our homeless liaison work and that work, so we could certain, absolutely make that a future learning and leadership presentation.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? But we are pulling BA 21-270. Do we have them? Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Is there any further discussion at all? This will be a roll call vote?
Director Timinski?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Reesinger?
Aye.
Director Merschbach?
Aye.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
President Humbles?
Aye. Now we will do the separate vote on BA 21-270, tabulation of Dell Chromebooks. All in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye, I'm sorry. Opposed? And abstained?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the proposed resolution for authorizing and setting parameters for the cell of school infrastructure, cells, service and use tax revenue bonds, and to approve the official statement. I will turn this meeting over to Dave Nicholson.
Thank you, President Humbles. This resolution is, what it basically states, we are in a process of going to be issuing our second round of bonds for the construction of the new Maple Grove Elementary School on the current Jackson site. And so, back in, in November, we issued the first round of bonds of 9.9 million, and the reason why we're doing it in two rounds is so they can keep, be bank qualified. Anything less than 10 million can be bank qualified, and with the market the way it is right now, our best hopes in getting the most bidders and the best bids would be on a bank qualified scale of that. And so, this next round, we're anticipating that our, it's going to be issuing about 6.36 million, and within, not to exceed interest rate of 3%. This is not, this will not fund totally the full construction costs. We will be cash flowing approximately ten million of those costs of the construction of the new elementary school with current fund balance. But this will get this these bonds sold with the hopes of getting them sold in in April. And we can take advantage of the low interest rates that we are seeing today. And the official statement that's a part of that, that goes along with all bonds issuance that we do. And so the official statement on a publicly issued bonds, that's a requirement. And so those the official statement is a review of that I reviewed it already, made some modifications to it, and this is the approval from the board on the official statement.
Are there any additional questions for Dave, for David? I'm sorry.
Dave, was this a change of plans? Were we originally going to just do the nine million dollar first round? Or was this second round always part of our plan?
It was always part of our plan. If we went back into March of two thousand twenty, we the board approved authorization to issue up to twenty-five point nine million dollars of bonds. And that was initially given authorization. And at that point in time, we weren't sure we're going to cash flow, but we are going to cash flow a portion of that now and limit the amount of borrowing that we're doing. And so we could have done it in one issuance, but that would have been, it would not have been bank qualified. And so we felt because of the current situation that we felt like it's our best bet to get the most bidders on that that we needed to issue in two installments so that we could get bank qualified. So. But it was always, it was always whether it's and that that resolution was one or multiple issuances to get to that twenty-five million dollars if we needed to, so.
Dave, can I ask what bank qualified means?
Bank qualified means that you can have local banks be able to bid that and take that on themselves if they wanted to. And so that just opens up more people that would have the ability to do that. So.
I was going to ask, Dave. Do you have a ballpark of what? Because these are save funds coming in for this, right?
Right.
What do we have committed in terms of our safe funds to these projects at this point? And what is a ballpark of, if you have it offhand, what we're going to be bringing in over the course of, you know, as far as save is extended out?
Well, when you talk about save dollars, you always talk about coverage level. So what you need to look at is what's your coverage level of the save dollars you're at? You're bringing in on an annual basis to pay your current debt. And you always want to make sure that the save dollars coverage level is for every dollar of debt that you have, you need at least a dollar twenty of revenue to help offset that debt. And so when we're looking at our coverage levels with this bonds, I, you know, I'm just speaking off the top of my head. I think our coverage level with these issuance is about one point three five at the lowest point, if I remember right. So we have a dollar thirty of revenue. And that's look on that's looks at all the projection payments throughout the course of the future years. And so every year we bring currently about seventeen million dollars a year. So you always have to look at what you your coverage level and and is for the payment of those bonds. And when you're projecting at our current level, can we make still make our bond payments, have the coverage levels that we need to make? That's what we're looking at all the time. We're always looking at reestimating that every time you go out for issuing of future debt, we always want to make sure that you have the coverage level to meet the one point two minimum is coverage level for all future projects when we issue that bet. The grand total dollar amount off the top of my head, I don't have that figure in front of me right now.
Approximately seventeen million a year.
What's that?
Oh, you said seventeen million is about what we get.
It's what we bring in about annually a year.
Depending on receipts from the state and everything. It's that's affected by enrollment as well.
Correct. And even with that, we are this, we are about seventeen million this next year with those estimates. Previously, we're the last enrollment is lower two hundred thousand dollars, you know, of this six hundred and fourteen kids, you're two hundred and some thousand dollars is what we're losing. So.
So unless there's a significant change economically or a significant change in enrollment, we'll kind of be bringing that in and it'll either or, you know, change with those small fluctuations.
Yeah, as we as we continue to implement the Matt's facility plan, well, that's always going to be a factor in determining how quickly we can continue to move forward with the plan. So it's what our coverage level is, availability of funds, so.
Thank you. If there is no further discussion or does anyone have any other comments? Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote?
Director Boertschning.
Aye.
Director Merschbach.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Timinsky.
Aye.
Director Reesinger.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Hi.
President Humbles.
Aye. We will now hear from Dave Nicholson regarding approving publication and scheduling a public hearing for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one twenty-two budget.
Thank you, Nancy. I'm going to share my screen now, so. Please let me know if you can see it. Awesome. Thank you, President Humbles. I like I am pleased to be able to share with all of you the first look at our two thousand twenty-two or twenty twenty-one twenty-two fiscal year budget certified budget. And this is kind of the first overlook at it, and it's really a high level. And that's kind of what the certified budget is. It's really a high level of your overall budget. It's a line item budget when you get to the details of the nitty gritty of your budget. This is really intended to be a high level. And so that's kind of how this presentation is going to be focused on. All right. So this slide really shows the annual budget cycle. And it is a cycle because it we're always looking at budget at all times. As you can see, it's a continuous circle. And we're we are always in a budget development process throughout the year, whether it's preparing for the certified budget or updating our line item budget. We're always making sure that all along the way, we're meeting the required deadlines as are kind of outlined on the circle here. Today, as you can see in the box, we are at this stage where we're ready to schedule the public hearing for our budget. That is, our budget has to be certified, I'm going to jump down here, by April fifteenth. That's the required certification deadline, where we have to have our budget certified and sent to the county auditor for certification. So our plans is to set the public hearing tonight and have the public hearing to be scheduled on April twelfth. But we have to make sure that we get it published in the paper to meet the requirements of publication notice requirements of no less than ten, no more than twenty days. And so at March twenty-fourth, that's going to give our patrons at least on the the long end, close to twenty days to be able to see the public and the notice and be able to know what the budget entails before we actually have a public hearing on the on April twelfth. So after April fifteenth, we're still not done with the budget process. We also are going to be looking at setting amending our budget. Sometimes some school districts in Cedar Rapids used to be one of those school districts that amended the budget the same time that the prior year's budget or the current year's budget, I should say, the same time to certify the next year's budget. I'd like to wait until later. Statutorily, we need to have this budget amendment done by May thirty-first. So I like to wait because there are things that are changing. And we're always learning more the time as time goes on. And especially when when we're in the era now of of we're doing construction, we need to monitor what our construction costs are to see what expenses we're paying. Sometimes that could swing you one way or another. And we also need to look at our other expenses to see if we need to modify our budget to be able to not exceed that. And what you're looking at on our budget, we're looking at four categories when we certify our budget. Where that's what we're looking at, you know, four categories to see if we extend it, exceed any of those categories. And those categories are instruction, instructional areas, certified support or certified support services, non-instructional and other expenditures. And I'll go a little bit more and talk a little bit more in details on a further slide about those areas. So because we need to amend our budget, I because we only have one board meeting scheduled right now in May, it will probably require a special board meeting to be happened on May twenty-fifth on a Tuesday. That board meeting will be very quick board meeting. It would just be for adoption of the amendment, but that is something that we'll probably end up needing to do. And so once we get all that done, we're also to the point of we're going to shoot for a line item budget of finalization at the end of August. So that's what we're shooting for. And that is where the detail of the budget is created within our system. And we monitor that. And all year round, we're continuing to look at our line item budget and make modifications as needed as we go off through the course of the year. That completes the circle of the budget cycle. So now we're looking at our proposed for FY twenty-two, our proposed budget. And on this slide, you can see that we have, the certified budget does two things. We really it sets our tax levy and it sets the maximal expenditures by the four functional areas. Like I said before, the four functional areas are instruction, support services, and support services covers areas like media, guidance, administration, business support, transportation, operations, maintenance. Those are some examples of the areas that covers. The non-instructional includes nutrition fund or daycares. And other expenditures include things such as construction costs, principal interest payments for our debt, our AEA flow through dollars, which money that we record as revenue and expenditures for all the support the AE does for the school district. That's AEA flow through. And our preliminary budget shows that we are estimating receive about three hundred and three three hundred million, three hundred twenty-four thousand nine ninety-eight. I want to stress that that is all funds. And then our expenditures, we're projecting that to be estimated to be about three hundred twenty-seven million nine oh six eight forty-six. And it does show that our expenditures do exceed revenues. When you are in construction of buildings, that tends to happen because you're talking about these are big dollar amounts of the new buildings cost. And you're going to see expenditures exceed revenues mainly due to the construction. So now we can see here, we are looking at keeping our levy flat. We're not proposing an increase at all in our levy. But unfortunately, even though we're proposing a flat levy increase, the state rollback percentage, which is the percentage of the value of your home that you pay taxes on, that went from fifty-five point oh seven percent to fifty-six point four one percent. That increase increases the amount of the value of your home that you're paying taxes on. For the res for a hundred fifty thousand dollar resident valued home, residential home, that increase is about thirty dollars, over thirty dollars. And it's a hundred percent due to the rollback and but not due to the levy itself. So I think it's important that, and I'll talk a little bit more about how we were able to maintain a flat levy on the future slide. But it is something that we were being very mindful. We didn't want to increase taxes if we didn't have to to our patrons during especially this difficult time. Budget impacts that we were looking at that has impacted FY twenty-one and twenty-two. During the current fiscal year, we had a lot of additional expenses in providing education to our students during this pandemic. To help offset our expenses, we have received approximately three million dollars in educational, elementary, secondary school emergency relief funds. It's a part of CARES Act, and that's the part of money of the CARES Act that funds schools. And so we did receive, like I said, three million dollars. And we use that for such things as our to offset some costs for our PPE, computer and hotspot technology, mental health support, strokes and materials, and a laundry list of other things that we use those funds for. And and in addition, we we also tapped into FEMA. And and we weren't sure it was going to be helpful or not, but we took a leap of faith and it actually paid off. We have have approval of about five hundred thousand dollars worth of claims that we have been approved. But we've only received payment on one of them so far. We're anticipating the other payments on the two other claims to come in. And what we used our FEMA for was things that we felt like we had the biggest opportunity for them to say yes to. We used it for our P some PPE and mobile air purification systems. We bought some HIPAA filters filtration systems for classrooms that kids could not wear mask for some reason or music in rooms. We were very focused on where we put those in the health offices. We put them in health offices as well. And that was an area that we weren't sure we were going to get approved, but FEMA has agreed to pay for those. In addition, we received round two. In round two, we got received notification January two thousand twenty-one. We are using those funds kind of over two fiscal years. We're planning on using these funds. And we are reimbursing us ourselves this year for some COVID expenses that we have incurred. So the COVID leave or otherwise known as F F C C R A leave, we'll be using some funds for that. We're going to be reimbursing for the additional bus attendance that we had. We're also going to look at the money that we spent for some additional instructional materials for remote learning that we have paid for. And also reimbursing some of the rollout of the elementary technology that wasn't totally covered under S R one. We're using that to help fund S R two funds. And that's right now is approximately three point six million of those dollars. And FY twenty and also in FY twenty-one, we're we're looking at about two million dollars. We don't know how if that's going to be enough or not. But this is just a placeholder at this point in time in the budget because we're still trying to build the the model, what we're going to do to help support our students in the educational learning loss from the time of COVID. Because we know their kids have lost educational regress a bit. And we're looking at supporting them to bring them back up to the level they were. And and so that those plans are still being worked out as we speak. In FY twenty-two, we're hoping and starting this summer, we're hoping that we will start improving our HVAC systems to improve air quality at our schools. That's a big dollar amount, but we do have needs to improve our air quality and something that we've been struggling with for many years. This will allow us to be able to put in some technology that's going to allow us to filtrate the air better and bring in a good fresh air and also take care of all the viruses and things that are flowing in the air. And this, we're hoping about a five million dollar that will be able to help retrofit all our buildings to be able to accommodate that. We also are going to continue our our mental health supports that we have instituted this year. We'll continue that in the next year, and that's about a half a million dollars at this point in time. You know, that number could grow depending on our needs, but that's a kind of placeholder right now. And also in in the following summer, we're going to continue our support of students' educational learning loss. And we're estimating that, you know, the following year about two point five million dollars. And also in on top of COVID, we were also devastated by the August tenth derage. And also, in, on top of COVID, we were also devastated by the August 10th derailment show. This caused more than $51 million in damages to our facilities. And thankfully, the majority of all of these expenses are going to be picked up by insurance and will be responsible for a one-time $10,000 deductible. But, you know, there might be a few things that will fall through that. Like renting out facilities for student activities that might be disallowed by the insurance. For the most part, I think will be made whole. And, and due to the duration of the pandemic, our certified enrollment also took a hit, which will impact our 2022 budget. And so we were down 614 kids and that is a direct impact of our budget for next year. Some assumptions, budget assumptions that impact our fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget is the first and foremost is this 2.4 supplemental state aid that the legislature passed. That included, that includes, on top of that, includes a $10 per pupil equalization funding for equalization of the funding formula for equity. And so, you know, that, not every school district receives the same per pupil dollar amount. This is trying to bring all the schools to equally to the same per pupil funding amount. And we do, we do benefit from that at this time. It also includes, because of our enrollment loss, we, we will be on the budget guarantee for the amount of about 2.6 million dollars for next year. If you wanted to do an impact on taxation, that is equivalent to about a 45 cent increase due to our loss in enrollment. I'm going to jump to slide nine to talk about the budget enrollment real quick, then I'll come back to this slide. What is a budget guarantee? Well, the budget guarantee is a safety net that was created by the legislature to allow schools to generate a 1% increase in new money or supplemental state data, 1% equivalent to that in times of declining enrollment. The budget guarantee is a, does generate spending authority, unlike some cash reserve levies do not. And it's, it's funded 100% by property tax, taxes. To be granted, the budget guarantee, the board must pass a resolution when adopting the budget to go for the budget guarantee. And this is a sample resolution, very simple. It just states, "The Board of Directors of Cedar Rapids Community School District will levy property taxes for the fiscal year 21, 22 for the regular program budget adjustment as allowed under section 257.14 of the Code of Iowa." So that's pretty simple, that's kind of budget guarantee in a nutshell. So, and we also want to make sure that we want to maintain that stable and property tax levy and keep the solvency ratio greater than 10%. And we are using SER funds to support COVID-related expenses. And we're doing some cash reserve levies that we're allowed to do and to cover our ELL deficit and increase enrollment cost out. And also, we're levying 10.5 million or $12 million SBRC special ed deficit due to our decrease in operational expenses. We didn't feel like we needed to levy the full $12 million. And plus, we want to be mindful of our overall special ed, overall taxation as well, levy that we were doing. And in addition, the timing really couldn't have been even better. We are paying off our general obligation bonds this year we're in right now. And so next year, we will not have this GO debt on our taxes for next year. So that actually declines, will impact our levy by 37 cents. So that's pretty good timing when we have a budget guarantee coming on board. Some of our expenses that we have. This is not all encompassing of everything, but these are just some highlights that we have included in our budget. We've obviously included estimated negotiated settlements, including health insurance costs. We, as a part of the management fund, we include the estimates for our property casualty rate increases. And right now, we're hearing that to be about 17%. And in addition to that, we are, we are seeing increased unemployment claims due to the loss of students to COVID and derailment. We, and we actually were seeing the needs of our, we did not replace some of our parapositions at this time because we felt like we were meeting the needs at this, you know, this year. And so that has, we have seen an increase in our unemployment and we do anticipate some of that increasing again next year. And in our capital projects fund or save fund, we have made sure that we have enough budget shown to complete the two elementary schools that we have in construction at this point in time. The Maple Grove, which is the current Jackson Elementary School. We are tonight going to start the process to issue a second round of bonds for that. And so in FY21, we have, would have issued about $60 million in saver bonds to for the Jackson. And like I said before, we're going to cash flow the remainder of those. And so that is something that, that does impact our budget and we have that accounted for. Now we're looking at comparisons, I like to always show the board a comparison from one year to the next year. So when I said about 45 cents for the budget guarantee, you see that number here. That's about 2.6 million, that's about 45 cent increase here. And so our debt service, you can see FY22, there's no increase here. And our current year, we're about 37 cents, which is about $2.3 million in levy. So one could say that this took care of a majority of the budget guarantee. Another area we're going to see that probably picks up the remainder is in our instructional support. Our instructional support property tax portion for instructional support levy last year was 20, almost 27 cents. This year that drops to 15%. There's, how the instructional support levy works, we actually have an income surtax that plays into that. And we typically will do a 5% income surtax and fund it that way. And, but last year, the 5% under, if you do an income surtax, a portion of that levy has to be property tax. Last year, we had to drop it from 5% to 4% because it put a negative impact to property taxes. You can't have a negative impact to property taxes. So because this year we are levying 5%, it actually dropped our levy from last year to this year. And so that helped us be able to offset some of their increases. And two, the other areas that you're looking at, you can see is our cash reserve levies. You can see where our last year, our special ed deficits is, you know, is increasing 14 cents compared to the current year. But we also have open rolled out is dropping from 2.3 to 1.9. And our ELL did go up a little bit, but we, but we did not issue levy any additional cash reserve levy for cash flow purposes this year, this next year. We don't anticipate the need for that. So all in all, you know, in the general fund, it, there is a 24 cent, a 14 cent increase. But, you know, we're, we're offsetting it down here. The other side of it is our, we talked a little about management fund to some of the impacts that we're having to fund our management fund. We are proposing a 22 cent increase for our management fund to make sure we do have the funds for the increase in insurance costs. For the, we're also going to be faced with one-time deductibles increases for separate deductibles for wind and hail claims now. They're putting us at a $50,000 deductible for those types of losses in the future. We're currently at $10,000 deductible, that's going up to $50,000 this next year. And we also want to make sure we have enough money in our management fund to be sure that we're dealing, going to be able to cover in any additional retirees. We have, we have a lot of people put in already for retirement, but we don't have a hard deadline. So we could still have other people decide to file for a retirement. We want to make sure we have the funds to be able to cover all that. So, so all in all, we are being able to absorb the budget guarantee and our overall levy is staying flat. So. We already talked about the budget guarantee and go to the next screen. Funding basics for general fund real quick. Cost per pupil is always set by, by the state, otherwise known as SSA. You can see next year, our SSA is going up 2.4%. That includes $2.6 million of budget guarantee brings us to this amount, which takes us up to the 1%. And because of our net out losses in open enrollment, we actually are going to see a new money impact of 0.87%, not the full 1% because we lost more kids out to open enrollment. The spending authority is funded in part by state taxes, 67% and 33% property taxes. Like you said, the spending authority, how you calculate that is taking the cost of the number of students certified enrollment times the cost per student plus the $2.6 million gets us to the 219, $119,000, million dollar figure here. The other point to note is enrollment is always, student count is always a year behind for tax. So October, the prior year's October enrollment always funds the next year's budget. You're always a year behind. So that's an important thing to note in school funding basics. How have we been, our trend and our overall levy? You can see, we tend to try to keep things steady when possible. We were at 1548 a couple of years, we're at 1538 for three years, 1507 for, 15.07 for two years. Then that will be at 1536 for two years right now. So that's something that we try when we can. We don't want to have taxes kind of fluctuate every year if we don't have to. Cash reserve dollars levied, you can see that we have, we're at about a highest that we have had in a cash reserve levy. And so that is due to some of our special ed deficits that we had and whatnot. So we are levying quite a bit and that's why we're trying to, looking at doing what we can to minimize that whenever possible. Our, how's our valuations being in our district? Well, good thing is the trend line is going up and that's what we like to see. It's, so we didn't increase very much. We went from $5.79 billion to $5.86 billion. But the good thing is it's going up and hopefully we'll see that continue to happen that way. Our overall comparisons for our, how do we compare in Lynn County? These are all the schools in Lynn County. The property tax levy in the darker blue is what you see here. And the lighter blue is the property tax adjusted for income surtax. I like to show both. When you look at strictly property taxes, North Lynn is the lowest at 14.26, followed by Albernett at 50.7. And then we're the third lowest at 1536. But it changes a little bit when we look at the income adjusted for income surtax. We're no longer, the third lowest, we're the fourth lowest. North Lynn is still the lowest at 14.73, followed by Albernett at 1517. They don't have an incomes, income surtax, so you can see both levies are equal. And Springville then is the third lowest at 1574 and then we are the fourth lowest at 1647. So I think that's important to note when you're looking at across the board in our inland county, kind of where we're ranked. We are on the lower end and we have been for quite some time. Now we're looking at fund balance and unspent balance. The unspent balance is also known, budget, unspent budget authority is also known as unspent balance. And that is pretty much what you legally are able to spend. It's kind of like unspent credit card balance and you, that you have available and you can go up to the credit limit. But in reality, you can go over that, but that's a bad thing. You don't want to go spend more than what you have legal authority to do. Then you end up in front of the school budget review committee asking for a workout plan. So you never want to be there. So the fund balances in the green bars, the unspent, the unspent balance is in the blue bars across the board. So back in FY13, 14, you can kind of see there are some not good years on both. We were sitting not very good with our, our fund balance. And in FY13, we had, you know, about $7 million more in authority than we had in fund balance. That quickly changed in one year, went from 10.6 to 4.8. That was some low times of the district, it was very difficult. And from that, we had to do a lot of budget cuts after that to get ourselves increased cash reserve levies significantly over time to be able to get ourselves back in a good financial position. So since that time, you know, we have, we have increased our unspent balance. And to the point of FY20, we closed out at eight, low over 18 million. We're projecting that to go up to about 19.6 at the end of this year and then drop back down to 18.2 million the following year. And you're seeing our fund balances kind of drop the last couple of years. And this, in FY21, we're anticipating that to go back up in part by the, some of the SER funds that we have been receiving. That's going to help us build some of that back up this year. And also, if you remember, we did a cash reserve levy last year for cash flow purposes of about a million dollars. That's also contributing to this increase here as well. Because we're one to make sure that we stay solvent and have a great, strong financial position as we continue to move forward. And so this is a solvency ratio. And so where you can kind of see our solvency ratio, we were at just about low, a little more, around 15%, a little bit greater than that in FY18. But since then, we've been taking a pretty strong decline the last couple of years. So as we were projecting, we needed to know, we needed to do something. And so we did a cash reserve levy last year for cash flow to help try to keep us to flatten this line out a little bit. But due to COVID and due to some of the things that we've been able to do, it's actually going to increase slightly our solvency ratio from 11.6 to about 12.2 or so in this next year. Then that's probably, we're projecting that to drop down to about 12% is kind of what my best guess at this point in time. We are above our bold board goal at this point in time, but a lot of things can change. I can quickly change that very quickly and bring it down. And we want to be sure whatever we do, we keep it above that 10%. That really helps with our bond ratings as we go, issue future bonds and to help meet our facility master plan. So that's been very important. At this point in time, I could open up to any other questions to the board.
So Dave, I want to make sure what we're doing here is we're approving the publication for the scheduling of the public hearing. And, and then you had one slide that kind of showed the timeline, the circles. Are those dates set in stone? Because I, I believe you mentioned a special board meeting. Is there a way we can adjust that to be presented at the May board meeting? Is that something we could do?
At the May board meeting, it will be pretty tight to be able to make that happen. We can, we can try to do, if we wanted to try to do, that would shift these dates back. And, and I can look in and see if we can make that happen.
And so, once the information is pub, that, if we get, we approve this, you're saying then it's published and that gives folks an opportunity to really look at all the information that you shared with us and especially as a board member, the information that was shared.
Yeah, in the board packet, there's a one-page summary, that's where it actually gets published. And it shows five functional area, all funds together, what the certified budget amounts are. Like I said, that is always at a high level. It's not until we do the line on the budget is where we're getting into details.
Any questions from the board? Any board members?
President Humble, I do have a few questions. David, are those SER funds categorical? And is there a different category for SER2 than there was for SER1? You're on mute, David.
I wouldn't say that we are, they are categorical in nature. They really come in as Mr. Lane's income to us. But yeah, we do have requirements of how those funds can be spent. And so in that nature, in that part, they are kind of categorical.
Okay. I have another question about the general fund reserves. Are there restrictions on how that general fund reserve can be used? You're on mute again, David.
That's interesting. Just automatically goes on review. No, there's not. Anyway, you know, that's related to board's discretion on the reserves. But we always want to be mindful that we try to maintain a strong financial position. And so that's, that's only caution I would give the board. So.
Okay. And then I just need clarification on, on one point here. Now, we're talking about the property taxes remaining flat at that 15.36%. But then I had heard you reference that we've got a budget guarantee coming on. So that was confusing to me because I, I just need some clarification there.
When you're looking at, we're keeping our budgets flat. The only reason why we can keep it flat, I want to take a look at this page again here. I want to share my screen again. Am I still sharing? No. This screen here, we're able to, the budget guarantee is factored in next year's budget. And it shows here about 45 cents. But because we have the debt service coming off and our instruction support levy dropping from 26 to 15, we're able to offset our budget guarantee increase of 45 cents because of the other things falling off or reinduced and the debt service falling off our levy. So that's.
Clarification for the public. Budget guarantee does not have to be, that shortcoming does not have to be made through a property tax increase. We're offsetting that additional expense by, by internally using some funds differently to make, to make those two pieces come together so that we're financially solvent. Yes?
Yes, we, well, we are absorbing the budget. So we are reducing our, like typically we do the full special ed deficit. We are not levying our full special ed deficit that we typically would, which would increase our taxes even more. We're not doing that full amount and we're also using some of the debt service levy that would have fell off to help absorb our budget guarantee that we have for this year. Hopefully moving forward, we won't be on the budget guaranteed in the future years. But this timing of the debt service geo bonds being paid off really helped us keep our levy flat and not have to show an increase to our patrons. And that allows us to absorb that.
Excellent. Thank you for the clarification.
Are there any other questions?
David, I have one quick question about that 37 cent levy that fell off because of the debt service. What, what debt was that that we were servicing?
Good question. It's a combination. It has been refunded a couple of different times, these bonds.
Okay.
I couldn't necessarily tell you exactly, but I think part of that would have been for some of our HVAC upgrades that we did years ago and, and we're still paying on those bonds. There's a lot of different things that were kind of three issues, two or three issues were rolled together in the refinancing. So I really couldn't tell you exactly.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's fine. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just had a quick question. Maybe this is for Superintendent Bush. With our open enrollment, I believe I remember you saying at one time, a lot of that is due to virtual learners that leave the district. Do we expect that to change in any way as we bring CRVA online over the next couple of years or we're not sure?
So I'd say that we are already seeing a shift in that trend. That's a great question. Director Merschbrach, that hats off to our teaching and learning department who oversees a lot of that open enrollment paperwork. And many times when that's the request of the family, they're not always aware. Folks who've left us in the past for virtual option, but this year we've obviously increased that robust option. They've reached out to families and who've chosen to return to Cedar Rapids because of our virtual options. But I think that will slow down. Another area for us where we, students choose another option or families do is our different homeschool options other than the Cedar Rapids homeschool option. So we just want to continue to provide choice for our families of our services that we can provide right here in our district. So that is absolutely our hope.
And Director Merschbrach, I think the number was around 70 families who would have otherwise opened enrolled out to a virtual option in the last 12 months that stayed in Cedar Rapids because of CRVA.
Thank you.
If there are no further discussions, all those in favor of approving the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next up is Superintendent Bush, who will provide us with an update on the pandemic and the district's return to learn plan.
Well, I am going to speak very briefly that things are continuing to, you know, develop. And I think the thing that has helped us the most, especially I would say since winter break time, has really been our community support around handling the pandemic. Vaccinations are obviously a huge positive move. And there has been concerted efforts to keep folks safe within our community. So those positivity rates have maintained. But one thing that's really helped us as a district is family engagement and talking with our families and finding out what they need and how we can continue to support them. So I am going to shift a little bit tonight and hand the reins over to Deputy Superintendent Quaker, who's going to give you just a brief update on family engagement as a strategy as a district. To, to Director Merschbrach's question, how do we, the folks maybe who've left us, how do we keep them engaged and our current families finding out what they actually need in this very challenging year? So Deputy Superintendent Quaker, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Bush. Please give me a thumbs up if you can see my screen. Thank you much. So we are really excited about our family engagement work that is happening this year. And we're really excited that the staff have stepped up. This has been a lot of work for our administrators, a lot of work for our staff members, and also a lot of work for our families to get involved in this. So just sending out some kudos to all of them for all their hard work and their accomplishments around this. We have four calls that are already done and two more intentional calls as focus areas that will be happening in the very near future. So as many of you know, this focus area was actually started and developed from the Not Without Me sessions that happened before the pandemic occurred. And it was all about intentionally closing those student achievement gaps. So for our family engagement focus, it hasn't just been on developing those relationships, but it's been about providing families with tools that they can assist us and partner with us in those efforts to improve student achievement across the board. If you can look at this screen, it's again about those partnerships and the instructional strategies. So all of these things lead to better attendance of our students, better literacy skills, social skills, students earning more credits, higher grades, more students going on to graduate. So what works? We know that in Cedar Rapids, there have always been teachers, in fact, all of our teachers making those positive personal connections with families on a regular basis. They've been very intentional about that. This year we've gone a step further. So it's not only about answering, is my child at above or below grid level for, for families? It's about giving them those tools and high leverage strategies to really be able to assist our student at home. And then it's been about our teachers really listening to what families need to assist and be that true partner. Last week I had an opportunity to be in one of the elementary buildings and the principal was telling me about how the various sections of a grade level organized a Google Meet, got the students really excited about the game they'd be playing. And families and students on an evening all logged in 98% participation between that grade level and learned a game that they can utilize and still have at home to use on a regular basis, engaging families, engaging students, and all again about improving that student achievement level for all of our students within our system. To go into more of our data and details, Justin Blitz, I'm going to pass it over to him. He has done a really great job helping lead these efforts. We've had lots of people involved, all of our administrators, all of our teachers. And again, our families are playing a key role as well. So I'm going to let him show you some of the data.
Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Quaker. So just to kind of piggyback on what we heard, this is Quaker share. Not only did we want to have really, really strong positive relationships with our families, but we also wanted to leverage those relationships and be collaborative partners in the, in the learning for all of our students. And a lot of the work that we did and have done so far is rooted in Dr. Karen Map's work out of Harvard. And in part of that framework and in the work that she's done says, really for this to be successful, we need to have four core beliefs really permeate our system and be held by all of the stakeholders. And these are those four core beliefs. So recognizing that all families have dreams for their children and want what's best for them. Believing that all families have the capacity to support learning at home. Realizing that families and school staff should be equal partners. And then recognizing that the responsibility for those relationships lies largely on, on the schools and specifically school leaders. If you want to go to the next slide. So we did a survey here in January to just assess where we were at. And what, what Dr. Map's research tells us is, is for us to be effective in this. On this four point scale, we would hope to be above a 2.5 on each of these indicators. And at each of our levels, elementary, middle school and high school, we did just that. We were above 2.5 on each of those indicators, which let us know that we were primed for success in this endeavor and that, and that we had that prerequisite mindset that was really going to help us excel in the family engagement work. So we, we had a couple of different goal areas as we were tackling this work. And one was just specific to how many calls families were going to get. And so we set out to say that each of the, the families in our system, we're going to receive three really intentional contacts from us each semester, so six over the course of the year. So that was one of our goal areas. And if you want to go to the next slide, Nicole. We've been intentional in monitoring this and you can see at each of our levels, the completion rate that we've had. And so at the elementary level, you can see, see that steady rise over time. And it says for conversation four that we were at 81%. We had to submit this a little early. This is actually at 86% now. So what we've seen at the elementary level is that we've steadily rose over each one of our, our calls. When we really put that into, if we contextualize that, that's over like 5,500 families just in one call window, receiving an intentional academic focused conversation from us. So more than just saying, hey, how are you, but saying, hey, how are you? And also here's how your child's performing and here's something that you could do at home to partner with us and really support that learning. So you can see that we've seen some really strong completion rates when it comes to our family engagement work. The other goal that we set was around family perception. So we know that it's not just about what we're doing, but it's how families receive that and how they're perceiving the work that we're doing. So we set five goal areas around that. The first is that 90% of families will report that they have regular access to their child's teacher. The second, 90% of families will report feeling connected to their child's teacher. The third, 90% of families will report that they know the learning expectations for their child and how to access resources. Fourth, 90% of families will report that they know how their child is performing academically, whether or not they're meeting the grade level expectations. And then really important number five, we want families to feel like collaborative partners in their child's education. So we really, as you can see with this, we want families to feel connected, but we also want to begin shifting that conversation to really academic focused conversations where we can, you know, all families can feel like they're collaborative partners and we're working together for success. Also with this, you'll see that we really wanted to be intentional when it comes to eliminating gaps. And so as Deputy Superintendent Quaker mentioned, this work was born from the Not Without Me conversations in really attacking that achievement gap. And so we knew that if we were going to do that, we couldn't have gaps and when families are being contacted and how they were being contacted. So we wanted to be intentional about that. Some other pieces that we looked at was as we were aligning with effective practices related to family engagement, just measuring how staff felt that they were prepared to go about doing this work. We didn't want to put our teachers in a position to go out making, making contacts without feeling supported in this work. So we just did some things to measure this winter around how staff felt. And you can kind of see the data here, again, wanting to be at a 2.5 or higher on a four point scale. And we're achieving that in almost every area on there. So if we look at that first indicator, staff believe that is an important part of their job to prepare families to support learning at home. We're above 2.5 at each of the levels. On that third indicator, my, my homeschool partnership activities are directly connected to student academic goals. Again, very important that we're focused on the academics. We see that we're above that 2.5 indicator on all of those pieces. And again, these are just other effective practices that we wanted to measure staff perception on. When we look at that third one on here, how often do you use phone, mail, text or email to strengthen relationships with families? Every single level was at above 3.65 on a four point scale. I mean, that's just phenomenal. It really shows that our teachers and administrators feel confident in their ability to go get after those, those relationships with families and to really try to work to be collaborative partners. And if you want to go to the next slide. And as also as part of that data collection piece, we also got just some staff perception in terms of qualitative indicators. You know, how are you feeling about this work? What has the impact been on your work this year? And I won't read all these out loud, but just reading through these was really, really touching for me and really impactful to see the impact that it was having on our, on our teachers, connecting with families and the impact that it was in turn having on, on student learning. So I'll just give you a second to read through. Here's another set. I'll give you just a second to read through these. So across all levels, we can just really see that this is really, really having an impact. Families are feeling connected. They're feeling supported. They feel like they have someone to turn to if they have questions or need help. And again, the ultimate goal is, is that it's impacting student achievement. And we can see from many of these stories here that, that it is moving the needle on achievement. And families feel equipped to support learning at home, whether it's through iReady or literacy strategies or whatever that might be. So just kind of, I know there's a lot of mumble jumble on here, a lot of words, but I'll just kind of talk through this. Really this year, we've, we've said, we want to make a commitment to contacting families, connecting with families, engaging with families. And so this year, our focus has been just, are these calls happening? Are we, are, is every family being contacted? But we know that all those contacts aren't the same level. We know that, you know, families have desires to be contacted in different ways and communicated with in different ways. And so our goal for next year, as we, we continue in this work is to be really intentional about connect, collecting feedback from our families, from the community, from our teachers, and creating some quality measures for what, what does an effective family engagement look like in Cedar Rapids Community School District? And how are we going to monitor? Not just are the calls happening, but the quality of the calls, making sure that we're meeting families where they are and meeting the family's needs based on what they're asking for from us. And you can go ahead to the next one, Nicole. Next slide, Nicole. So with that, I know that's just kind of a high level overview of the work that we've been doing. But again, like Deputy Superintendent Quaker shared, we're very proud of this, this work. And it's clear that the families are appreciating it as well. Are there any questions at this time around that work?
I, I, and thank you for the presentation. I do have a question. When you say that you're making three contacts with families, is that all of our families within the district? Is, are all of them being contacted? Cause we have quite a few students in our, our district. And, and then when I look to, you reference a survey, how many parents completed those surveys and returned that information to you? So that's kind of two questions.
Yep. So, so every family, the goal is for every family to be contacted. And we have a system to, to try to make sure that every family is contacted. Now, as you could see from the completion rate, we're not hitting 100%, but our completion rate is, is high. And we, we're growing. And we're growing each call. We've seen growth and so really proud of that. Right now, the survey data that we've collected is from our teachers and staff members. But we are going to be collecting community feedback. That's going to be part of our HRS survey that will go out, I believe, next month. Might be wrong on that, but in the next month, I believe. And that's when those five goal areas that we set around community perception and family perception, we'll be measuring on those. And so anxious to get that feedback and report that feedback back to you on how we're doing.
Another thing that we're intentionally doing is our current CIAT committee is working on this and providing feedback. They recently, like last week Friday, got a survey of how things are going. And the plan is to have that group, since it's administrators and it's teachers, it's staff members, it's lots of parents, it's community partners, work with us on making this better and even stronger for next year. And just really listening to what everybody's telling us for feedback, just really, how can we partner with families and have this be a homeschool partnership that really helps students across the board and closes gaps?
And I know you mentioned that you're making contacts by phone. Are there any visits to homes for those that you cannot get a hold of at all? Is that something that you do also?
There are many buildings that have done that. So right now, we've really just asked that it's two-way communication. Typically with whatever form of communication that families prefer, we just want that communication to be two-way. But we know that home visits are a really meaningful way to interact with families. And lots of our building administrators and engagement specialists and teachers are going about doing that. It's not a requirement, but it is happening quite frequently.
Any other questions from board members at all?
I have a question. First of all, tremendous work. Thank you so much. Family engagement, I think, is absolutely critical for families to feel good about what students are doing and for students to be successful. And that you recognize that and are making an effort to really build those relationships is great. This is a business about relationships. So I'm looking at my notes here and I see that one of the elementary teachers even commented on the Google Meet. And having visited a lot of buildings these past couple of weeks, I just keep getting tremendous feedback that because of that virtual platform that we're offering right now to be able to meet with families, that school administrators are reporting higher levels of engagement because we are offering that virtual platform. I'm wondering if that's something that you plan on maintaining moving forward? So that if it's proven to be successful, to continue with family engagement growth?
I think that's absolutely a mechanism we can use and should use for the future. Teachers have been trying out things that work and sharing them. And actually at that visit I had with the elementary, her thing was we've got to share administratively what's really worked in classrooms and buildings. Even conferences, we've talked a lot about doing conferences remotely and how that has really engaged parents and assisted them in helping students academically grow as well. So definitely a thing for the future, and I think we can embed it as much as possible where it's successful.
Yeah, to piggyback on that, Director Borcheting, referencing the survey that Deputy Superintendent Quaker mentioned that went out to the CIAT committee. As the results are rolling in, I think there's something like 12 families that have already responded. And one of those questions is, what form of communication do you prefer or has been most meaningful to you? And I want to say like nine out of 12 has selected the Google Meet as the most impactful form of communication. So that's going to be really important feedback for us as we move forward, knowing that families really appreciate that opportunity.
Thank you so much. I think that's interesting because I think that, you know, we were kind of all forced into this virtual situation. And wow, what a great silver lining that we found and that it is now being incorporated into practice, I think is great. So I just want to thank you so much for collecting data on that and reporting that out to us. I think it looks really great. I'm happy about this. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members at all? Thank you for your presentation. I'm glad we're focusing on the engagement and engaging our families. That is so, so important. So continue your work and please keep us updated how things are going. Thank you so much. Next, we're turning to our learning and leadership section. Deputy Superintendent Quaker and OLL will give us an update on CR CSD's winter assessments.
All right, thumbs up please for me if you can see the screen again. And thank you, President Humble's. We're also excited about this presentation, which we believe some of our student achievement, of course, is linked to our family engagement initiative that we've been doing in the district. So tonight, we're really going to focus on that student learning piece and we're going to give you a very high-level view. We were able to have our high school students take the MAP assessment as a benchmark for the very first time recently. We also have our elementary WinterFAST, which is a screening tool for literacy. And our middle school students took iReady in the areas of math and also in literacy. If you look at our strategic plan indicators, by June of 2022, at least 80% of students will demonstrate annual growth on ISAS. As you know, we were not able to give ISAS this past year, but we are of course giving it this year as well. And our goal is to have 95% of students take it. Our goal is also by next year to have at least 80% of our students score proficient or advanced in the areas of English, math, and science. So with the year that we've had this year, that's a high goal, but we're ready to do whatever we can to meet that goal and hopefully maybe even exceed that goal. So we are going to start tonight, again, very high-level assessment. At some point, we'll need to take a deeper dive when we get the ISAS results back. We would love to have a board work session around data. But we thought you'd be excited to see these winter assessment results and see where our students currently are at. So I have Eric Christiansen, Adam Zimmerman, and Cynthia Phillips all on tonight to help assist. And then John Rice, the Director of Teaching and Learning, will also be here if there's any questions out of the group. So again, a very high-level view. And Eric, I'm going to pass this to you.
Thank you, Nicole, and good evening, President Humble's, members of the board. We're going to talk a little WinterFAST results at the elementary level. I'm going to give you a high overview of FAST in general before we dig into the data. Basically, what FAST stands for is Formative Assessment System for Teachers. FAST is administered to all K-5 students in our system three times a year, fall, winter, spring, as you can see on your screen. And really, the purpose of FAST at a high level is that it identifies students who are reading at grade level and those who need additional support. So the FAST screener measures reading skills in which a student reads aloud a passage for one minute. The teacher records the number of words the student reads correctly, along with their reading accuracy. The screener provides an overall indication of how well the students or the student is reading and is related to other reading skills such as decoding, vocabulary comprehension. It's those foundational reading skills that we're going after, especially at the elementary level. As you look at the data, a year ago, back in 1920, our FAST results indicated 63% of our K-5 students were meeting benchmark, or what a lot of people call proficiency. Due to COVID, obviously, we could not test in the spring, which was really disappointing for us at the elementary because of all the success that we were making, as you can tell based on the chart. We're disappointed, but life moves on. We couldn't do anything about that in the spring. And so that brings us to this fall. This fall, as all of us know, we started four weeks later due to duratio. And despite that, we had 49% of our K-5 students demonstrating benchmark in the fall. We just finished our winter results about a month ago, and it indicates that 53% of our K-students are currently at benchmark, which is a 4% increase in our data. Again, if you look back on what we did prior to this year, it's like, oh, we were rolling, but we also knew the loss of instruction, especially for our little ones, our K-1 students. It took a hit. As you know, if you can imagine a kindergartner last year missing March, April, May of instruction, and then coming back as first graders and missing the first four weeks, it definitely took a hit. And that was nationwide. As I started looking and John Rice was, and a number of us were looking, first grade, not only across the state, but the nation, really took a hard hit due to COVID and for us, COVID and duratio. I guess one challenge I wanted to bring up to the board is serving the students that are not at benchmark, especially at the remote level. We have had outstanding teachers, as we all know, teaching at the remote world. And when a student does fall below benchmark, they immediately get some diagnostic testing along with an intervention group to try to keep them up to speed. Well, what's been happening on occasion, more than what we would like in the remote world, is that students would be assigned an intervention, assigned to a high-quality interventionist, be it our Propel coaches or other staff members. And they were, some of them were forgetting to log in because it was outside of, or what we call their asynchronous time. So we continue to work on that, to remind kids, to remind parents. As you know, in elementary, we work really closely with the parents due to age. And we continue to work on making sure those kids are getting their intervention support for literacy. I'll end this, though, on a really positive note. We are gearing up for another successful summer school experience through Kids on Course University that's funded through the Zach Johnson Foundation. And if you didn't already know this, one of the big ways to invite kids into that program this summer is we look at FAST data. And if they fall below benchmark, we target those kids and we invite them to come. We strongly encourage them to come because we do provide instruction over the summer to prevent that summer slide, along with some other meaningful activities for them to be engaged in. So that's where we're at. We will test again in the spring. We're on a strong trajectory, as you can see, but we need to get back to where we were in 1920. And I'm confident that we will as we continue down this path. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Adam Zimmerman, and he can talk about middle school and iReady.
Evening, President Humble's, members of the board. I'm excited to be here tonight with you to give a little information about iReady and our academic progress over the last year. iReady is our benchmark assessment that we take three times a year, all six, eight students do. It was selected two years ago now by a group of teachers who looked at the market and selected this over a number of competitors in this market space. One of the key benefits of the iReady Benchmark Assessment is its correlation to ISAS. So if a student is proficient on iReady, there's a 99% correlation with being proficient on ISAS at the end of the year. And this is based on the one year of ISAS data we have, so take that for what it's worth. But even if a student is in the yellow, which is up here, which is on the iReady assessment, demarcation of one year behind, they have an 85% chance of being proficient on the ISAS at the end of the year. Very rigorous tests, we have leaned into it and really tried to make improvements in this rigorous space. And it's a good measure of the standards. So we'll talk about reading and then we'll go into where we are in math after that. So our goal at the beginning of the year was 10 points of growth across all six middle schools. As you can see, what we're really excited about is the growth we've made from fall to winter. We started at 25% proficient. In September, we've made 13 points of growth from fall to winter, which is exceeding what we did last year in a normal year, which was 5%. So we're really encouraged by this. In addition, I think another bright spot is if you look at the yellow and red here, red is two or more grade levels behind, you're seeing those numbers shrink considerably and moving into yellow, which means we're making progress for not just our students who are already proficient, but we're moving kids from up the scale, from red to green, which we think is very promising, both on this year's ISAS, but in years to come as the kids move grade level to grade level. One of the, if you go back to reading, if you add up the numbers, you're going to see they don't all equal 100%. One of the big challenges this year has been to get all students tested. In the fall benchmark, we had 86% tested and we're always shooting for at least 95%, if not 100. We moved the needle to 93 in the winter, and we'll be looking to move that up above 95% and really shooting towards 100 in the spring. If you look at the overall proficiencies, this isn't where we want to be. We don't want to set a 40% goal, but it is progress. And that's what we are aiming for year after year. And if we continue to make these kind of gains, we'll see us arrive at that goal in short time. So if you go to math, not as significant growth from fall to winter. You can see we only made six points of growth, which is significant, but not nearly as much as reading. And you still see those red bars at the 40% level and you're not seeing the same level of movement. For the last two years, we've had a very explicit focus on reading. We spent a year on the why, why it's so important. We talked about instructional practices. We brought in an intervention system. This is perturbing and disturbing that we're only at 28, but this is also a matter of focus. So I know our principals, our teachers are really focused on what are our next steps? How do we bring the focus not only to literacy, but to math as well, to see these numbers move? I think seeing the reading numbers move gave us great self-efficacy to say, when focused on, we can begin to turn the tide on some of these what seem to be intractable problems previously. So lots of bright spots. We're not where we want to be, but we think we're on the path to make progress. And with that, I could take questions or I'll pass it to Cynthia for doing questions at the end.
Good evening, everyone. President Humble's, Board of Directors, and colleagues. I'm excited to get to talk about the high school's new benchmark assessment that we adopted this year and were able to launch for the winter testing assessment window. So MAP stands for Measures of Academic Progress. Our goal will be that we also have three testing windows throughout the year. We did not test in the fall because our buildings were not yet open, and so we were a bit delayed. And then I would like to commend the high school administrators and teachers for the work they did to launch a new benchmark assessment in the era of COVID and managing hybrid and online learning, while they also had to figure out how to manage a new assessment. So it's quite a feat in and of itself. And so I just really commend the ability to be able to launch this. And with that, I would like to look at our first set of data. And so the MAP scores, there we go. Another piece of information, the MAP assessment is a computer adaptive assessment. And so what that means is it adjusts according to each individual learner that's taking the test. And so each learner gets a unique set of questions. And as they answer more correctly, the questions may get harder. And if they're answering incorrectly, then the questions will adjust to be responsive to the learner's needs and skill level. And so with that, we were able to manage to assess in reading, math, and science. And so these will be the three areas that we will benchmark in three times a year. And for this assessment window, we ended up testing 79% of students in math, 78% of the students in reading, and 82% of the students in science. Now, these are our ninth through 11th graders. Seniors do not take the benchmark assessment. And so with those percentages that are right around the high 70s and low 80 percentile, this chart shows you the proficiency score based on those. And so we can see that in reading, we have 73% proficient. In math, we're at 64% proficient. And in science, we're 70% proficient. And so what's interesting is we have not had the opportunity to have a benchmark assessment before. And so in all cases, we were waiting until the Iowa assessment and then sort of just finding out how students were and then sort of just finding out how students were doing. And so now that we have this benchmark assessment, teachers are able to look at the scores of students and this particular assessment breaks down individual skills that students are at grade level on, that students need some work on, and then extension opportunities also. So having this information in the hands of teachers now has certainly impacted conversations and planning for instruction in the high school level in these three areas that we have not been able to engage in before. So this is very exciting. So on the next slide, this further breaks down the previous slide. And so this goes into the specific low, low, low to low average, average, high average and high. And so it's just breaking down further what those proficiency percentages look like so that we can really start to get targeted. If we look at the red area at the top in those 14, 16 and 14 percentiles, those are really the students that now teachers know they can give specific tier three interventions to. We can do wraparound services and we know specifically the standards and the skills that students need some support in. And we can apply that then through any and all of these levels. So with that, we're excited to have this opportunity to discuss and to share how we are looking to really change how we design instruction and how we can meet the needs of learners, especially timely in the year that we're in.
Thank you so much for your presentation on assessments. And we know that it's impacting not just Cedar Rapids, but all school districts with students not being in classes. I do have a question for you, Eric. The kids on course you talked about and the children that students will be identified. What happens if we have a huge increase of students? Will kids on course be able to accommodate that increase if we have an increase of students that need some additional assistance? This summer?
Great question, President Humble's. In fact, we are applying. Kids on Course is a 21st century grant and it also is funded through the Zach Johnson Foundation. We applied, it's a five-year grant. We applied back in December, we are still waiting. We have a lot of champions with the Zach John, Zach Johnson Foundation that are eagerly waiting for that. I guess to get right to your question, we are waiting for the funding. I know I've talked to Dave Nicholson. We can also utilize some funds that are going to come our way to recover student learning. In terms of how many kids, we'll have to look at that, to be honest with you. You know, it all boils down to the funding that we receive. Traditionally, we have served anywhere between, I think, I believe, eight to 900 elementary kids the last number of years. Exciting program, they make it fun for those kids as you can probably most of us know on the screen, some of the kids are like, oh, come on, summer school. But it's, it's the fun factor while we are still educating and trying to get a lot of those kids to benchmark. So it's kind of a wait and see, President Humble's. And then once the funding comes in, Steph Stolken, Stephanie Stolken, who leads it, I partner with her and then we determine the number of kids.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen and President Humble's and Board of Directors. I want to stress on this piece, those asset dollars are really going to come in handy for us. We've been looking at ways, we've been having meetings on how we can best utilize them. We want to really think outside the box. So we don't want to do what is the normal and the typical. We want to make sure we show those student achievement gains. Superintendent Bush and myself, I know are sitting in a U E N session of some outside of the box innovative ideas before we, you know, finalize. But we've had lots of conversations around what this could look like mentoring programs where we can utilize students even from the student advisory, you know, after school extensions. Can we do some boot camps for staff around those high leverage NASOT strategies aligned to HRS? So, because we really know the teacher in the classroom has the largest impact and then the principal within the building. So we have some great ideas. I think we'll get those finalized, but there's, there's opportunity. We have funds that we haven't typically had to really increase that learning and close those gaps for our student populations.
Other questions from the board?
I do have a few. First of all, I would, I would like to, I think it's great that you are making plans for learning loss recovery. That's fantastic and that, that the district is being so forecasting what it's going to entail as far as programming and staffing and, and money and getting all that together. So from an oversight perspective, awesome. Thank you for, for doing that and benefiting our children. Also, I think it's great that when we're talking about, it's great that there are results, proven results that are coming from focus, as was shown with the reading, with that intentional focus on reading and that there are some noticeable results there. That's fantastic. However, I do want to again just caution the board to be flexible when we're looking at system indicators. I know that we are a data-driven board, but again, nationwide, I think that, that people, districts across the country are seeing kind of some not huge growths or flatline or even a little bit of decline because those system indicators are going to be off just due to the circumstances that we are in. I do appreciate that the information is being gathered. It's good to have a teaching goal. But again, just, just want to make sure that we're super mindful that those system indicators are not necessarily something that is set in stone.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing and well, thank you all so much for the work that you do. And assessment is important and providing us with an update. And like I said, it's just not Cedar Rapids, it's impacting, it's, it's all over the nation that we are staying on top of that. So I thank each and every one of you that presented today. Okay, now last on our agenda is a presentation from Superintendent Bush regarding the Boundary Task Force. I pass it to you Superintendent Bush.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. And I guess just as a transition, I don't know if I've ever been more proud in my entire career than each day I just get, my heart just fills with pride for our district. And that we're staying focused on serving our children despite everything that we've been through, double crisis for our district specifically, the hardest hit district, I would say, in regards to the natural disaster, but with the pandemic as well. Yet you're hearing voices tonight saying, yep, we know and we've been through it, but we're still going to focus on doing everything we can to serve our kids. So hence the next presentation, which is about our continued work with these beautiful new buildings that are going to be coming to us on the west side of our district with this facility master plan work. So I'm going to share with you a slide deck that shows our boundary study work that has happened, that has gathered input from many points of view. But we have several folks that are going to assist with this tonight, including a couple of voices we're going to bring through with the data lens. Angela Billman was able to join us tonight, our data analyst, as well as Scott Winger, Transportation Director, Eric Christensen as the Elementary Executive Director, and Dave Nicholson and Adam Zimmerman. That's been kind of our driving team alongside our principals who've been overseeing this, this building construction work. So I will share with you our presentation for tonight. This is again, going to be a pretty high level overview. And then we'll gladly take questions from the board. Tonight's presentation is information sharing in regards to the boundary study work and actually what the data input has told us. And then we will next month bring back the information, really hoping to gather board input tonight and continued input that you might direct us that you'd like for us to gather. And then next month, we would hope to bring a final recommendation for our boundary study on the west side. So just as an overview, we had boundary study presentations, not just to our staff members, but also to our community members over the past eight weeks. And with that information, we wanted to make sure that everyone knew, including the board, our guiding principles that have been driving this boundary study work. Secondly, what our boundary options were and how we derived at those options. We presented three options to our community at large. However, their input created more opportunity for us, which you'll see tonight. And then we hope to gather your feedback and input in regards to this process tonight. So just as a high level, where did we start this work? We started with our elementary boundaries because those are really the buildings in question. As we knew, have our two new constructions, West Willow, our new construction at the Coolidge site, former Coolidge site, and now Maple Grove, which will be at the future Jackson site. All along, we've known that we would need to repurpose Truman. So you'll see at this high level map, this started with a conversation way back in the late summer with the team that I just mentioned, looking at this red area, which is the Jackson area boundary. The pink area is the Truman boundary. The blue area is the Coolidge boundary. Gold is Van Buren, gray is Hoover, et cetera. And our team just said, okay, how many students do we currently have in these buildings? And who lives there and what is the data that we have? And we just started to start with some high level conversations of our current data. In addition, we knew that we'd have to collect other data. I'm just going to speak to the second point and then I'm going to hand the reins over here to Scott and Angela. We did consult with R S P, Rob Schwartz, led a lot of our facility master plan study work with the original facility master plan study team several years ago. But we did engage with that team to look at our enrollment projections, our current demographic studies, our birth population projections. And then what do we see happening with even real estate development in our entire district? That information also gave us great opportunity to consider what our steps would be with this boundary study. And I'd like to hand it over to Scott to talk about the transportation tool that we've been able to use to help unpack this data even further.
Great, thanks, Noreen. Would you be okay if I shared my screen?
Absolutely, I'm going to stop sharing mine and you can take over.
Okay, is everyone able to see this screen? Okay, very good. So what you're seeing here is a screen image of our transportation bus routing software, Route Finder. And what you see on the screen is the Truman attendance area as it is today. So while I'm, why I'm showing you this is we were able to use this tool to help us identify where students are currently living in our district. I'm going to switch it over to, here's a sample of the Truman area again, colored here on the, on the screen. And all of the little blue people images are where the Truman students are living in, in, in comparison to the Truman attendance area. So as you can see, we, we were able to use this tool. You can drill down, you can zoom in, you can draw areas around specific neighborhoods and capture that student data from those areas. And we can just really analyze what kind of student population lived where. And from there, what I did is then able to export that student data and hand it over to Angela for further review. So I'm going to turn it over to Angela here now and let her talk about what she did with that data.
Wonderful, thank you, Scott. It was a really cool way to be able to utilize data. So the information that Scott was able to pull out of his system, then we could import into our side of the system, which has the student information in it. And from there, we could unite that with the student demographic data. And all of the outlines that Scott was able to make in his program then could translate into some visualizations in this tool called Tableau that we use pretty often to visualize data. So what you can see here is we just did a really quick glance at our options, option one, two and three. And then just to give you some context for what you're seeing in this visualization right here, you can select a demographic. Currently we're set at race, ethnicity, but you could check out any of these different demographic factors and see what each of the options would look like with regards to that demographic factor. And then furthermore, you could filter and sort to see what other effects the different map drawings would have. So it's a really cool integration of two of these different tools that come from completely different, what could be siloed areas of our district. So that was super fun and very, very interesting to be able to check out what those demographics would look, look like and lead us into the next phase of the study, which I will hand back over to Superintendent Bush.
Thank you very much. And I will just say, just on a little side note, when I entered the district four years ago, we were desperately seeking these kinds of opportunities with data. And we are able to really very quickly now gather information and make database decisions, drill down to an individual child in our district from multiple viewpoints. So thank you both Scott and Angela. So after the data collection process and overviewing everything that, that we were able to gather with our information, we got our school leaders together that fed from this particular boundary study. So really we included all the west side elementary school principals, the middle school principals, as well as the high schools, both Jefferson and Kennedy. And we looked at the data together, we looked at the maps together and we said, what, what's going to make the most sense as we analyze this data moving forward? We quickly were able to determine based on the projections from R S P and the data from Scott and Angela, that maintaining our current high school boundaries was a strong recommendation from the entire team because of what we projected with enrollment. We projected some enrollment happening on the southwest side, feeding into Jefferson, which has capacity to accept some enrollment capacity. And a, a flat line actually a little bit with Kennedy was actually at capacity now and could, would have a hard time taking a couple hundred more students at this point in time. So that was really good information for us. So our current recommendation is high school boundaries will remain the same. So Truman students who currently attend Truman and feed to Jefferson, no matter where they head, that particular neighborhood would continue to feed to Jefferson High School, if that's currently their enrollment. The middle schools, we decided we would pause and wait until we completed the elementary recommendations. Strong recommendations from the team were fifth grade to sixth grade is, is really a challenge and that transition and from a social emotional standpoint, if we can keep cohorts together, we think that would be a strong recommendation. So we want to make sure that as soon as we have the elementary boundary complete, that we would anticipate what those middle school impacts might be. And we can discuss what those potential possibilities would be tonight. And so then for, we go to the guiding principles for these elementaries. We know that the new elementaries can have 600 kids. We wanted to really look at demographic balance as much as possible and pay attention to nuts and bolts like traffic patterns and busing routes as well. So all those things were into consideration. This was the input process. Again, we started with those administrators and then we drilled.
Superintendent Bush, I think you want to share your screen.
Oh, am I not sharing? Sorry.
Sorry for the interruption.
Thank you for that. I get too excited. So here's the input process that we used. Again, we started with those building administrators, high level input from all those administrators. And then we really drilled down to individual discussions with each of the five elementary principals, looking at their specific data, their boundaries and knowing their families. Then we met and gathered all of that input and met with elementary staff members as well, gathered their feedback and then narrowed our options down after hearing all those pieces of input, knowing that we had to get input from our families in our community as well. So what you're going to see now are the presentations we did for all of our families and community members and the options that were presented to them after we gathered all of that data. And on that timeline, that would have been from, I would say, last spring, where we started this data collection process up into this early winter in November. Here's an example of the micro maps that Scott spoke of that we really developed. Here's an example of the micro maps that Scott spoke of that we really developed to create our options. So orange is the current Jackson boundary, pink is, is, uh, Truman, blue Coolidge, the yellow or gold is Van Buren, and gray is Hoover. In the conversations, what our data told us is that we've had enrollment increase both at Hoover and at Van Buren, to the point where they're a little concerned about their capacity. So we thought, well, then now's the time to consider those boundaries as well. And so we made these micro maps within the neighborhoods that we could do with the transportation tool to really look at individual sections. And so the Truman, for example, we looked at these little neighborhoods broken down into sections and this entire area as well for the Truman boundary. This is an example from, um, the tool that Angela showed. I'm just going to back up one slide. We looked at this particular example right here, this tiny little neighborhood, just from a geographical point of view, would make sense that that neighborhood might feed to the future Coolidge site instead of all the way up to the Jackson site. But what would that mean? How many kids actually live in that neighborhood? This data here tells us there were 11 kids, who they are, where they attend school, and how those families might be impacted. So here we are. This was option one that was presented to our community members. Um, we had, um, not just in-person opportunity of, of community session uh, that was offered at Jefferson with also translate, translators available. We offered, um, several, um, webinars, evening, um, Zoom sessions, uh, also individually, uh, at PTO meetings, especially at Truman, since that is our most significantly impacted building, to gather the input from our families. So this was the first option presented. And what it does is it'll tell you the current state of the total population and then the potential shift of what the, uh, recommendation would do. So at the potential future site, and we still named it Coolidge at that point in time, now we know it's West Willow. We recommended that there be a neighborhood from Van Buren that be considered in the Coolidge site, um, as well as Hoover, and looked at what that potential population would do to provide room at both Hoover and Van Buren, but also what was the balance between the future West Willow site and the Maple Grove site. And then looking at the entire Truman population feeding to the future, um, uh, Maple Grove site. So you can see what that did for the balance of numbers. And then this one outlier, and I think Scott's tool showed this best, we have 124 students that are not currently in the Truman zone who permit to Truman. And that's very interesting data out of 260 students. So we know that we will have to individually work with those families about their future school attendance sum. This was option one. Option two, slight variation, is looking at that exact neighborhood that I just highlighted a few moments ago, also being incorporated into the future Coolidge site. And then a large portion of the Truman zone heading to the future, um, uh, Maple Grove site. And then lastly, looking at a deeper cut, Van Buren does have the largest growth happening over time. However, we know that the DeRachio impacted some of their, um, neighborhood. So this projection is a little different. We think we're still gathering that data as to what we might anticipate with Aunt Van Buren. But what we currently, what we know, they may have been, there may be an opportunity for a little more room for Van Buren. And so we looked at one more section, um, being considered, uh, with the Van Buren, um, zone as well. After listening to our community members and staff members and gathering the information, um, this tells you how many people were able to attend and how many responded. We did send out a, a video of one of the webinars and, uh, we had over 225 members of our community watch that, or at least it's been viewed at least 225 times. And then people were, um, invited to take an electronic survey to give input. So really all of our parents and all of our community members had an opportunity to provide input. So with the input, what it has told us is that option two surfaced as the leading option. And then also a lot of narrative feedback to consider some other things within option two. Um, there was a Morgan Creek Park area and the Bluestone neighborhood, um, had a lot of input from, could we consider that as part of an attendance area to feed into what is the future Coolidge site now known as West Willow? And that would we consider grandfathering some families from that eight little C-section? Um, if there were fourth or fifth graders, would we allow them to potentially attend on with their Truman, um, friends to go to, uh, the future West or Maple Grove site for a year? And absolutely, we want to make sure that we're considering those options to support all of our, um, families. So, uh, we do think that, um, Hoover and Van Buren have certainly been a part of this process, but because that was new data for us, um, this past summer and fall, we think some additional follow-up sessions with our Hoover and Van Buren families will be necessary for those two sections that will impact about, um, 20 to 25 students from both of those schools. So this is that Morgan Creek area. So the one addition that we're making for probably a final recommendation here to the board would also include, um, there's Worcester Road down to Stony Point. This section right here, we think we would also add to that option two. And that would mean that there's some potential growth out towards Highway 100, which means that right at this Worcester Road, which if you slice it right over to Highway 100, everything north would feed to West Willow or to Maple Grove and everything south would feed to, uh, West Willow, uh, the future Coolidge site. And just as a reminder, these boundary recommendations would be for the fall of 2022. Even though West Willow opens this fall, it will not be full until the following fall when we repurpose Truman and our families then, um, go either direction. So here would be the final recommendation. As you can see, there's this new section of blue that's currently in Truman zone that we would then now feed to the West Willow zone. This small neighborhood from Van Buren, this small neighborhood from Hoover. And this is actually a very populated apartment complex that we think there'll be opportunity for English language learning program now feeding into, um, the West Willow site. And that also would program, um, impact Taft Middle School as well. And then this little neighborhood right here. And then everything north with this orange line would then feed to the Maple Grove site. And at this point in time, I'm going to stop with the presentation and we would gladly take questions from the board.
So are there any, you guys have done a lot of work looking at the, this, the boundaries. Uh, and, and, and that is helpful because I'm pretty visual anyway. But that is, it's, it's helpful that you're thinking about the schools and the shifting. And then also where some of the students may or may not have to move. So I appreciate the time that you've taken, uh, to really try and figure this out. We know it is not, I believe it is not final. But providing us with this information is helpful as a board member as we may have to make some other shifts. So, uh, I appreciate the information that you provided to us tonight. Any other questions from board members?
Do we anticipate, um, that because we've kind of got the new shiny schools over there, that there will be people requesting to go to those schools? And, um, do we just kind of maintain the policy that we've got in place on that? Or will there, there's not really an opportunity for like a, um, a lottery or anything, right? Because they're not magnet schools.
That's correct. And I, I would defer to Eric Christensen who can talk about our permit process. But yes, we would maintain our current permitting policy.
Yeah, it's typically, um, you know, parents can apply to a permit, um, that goes through John Rice's office. Um, and then if they don't get what they want, then they can always appeal, then that comes to me. And then I always, first and foremost, you have to look at numbers and, um, how many first graders, you know, how many classrooms? Cause we certainly don't want to load up, you know, have 30 kids in a first grade room. So yeah, those are done like Superintendent Bush said, on a case by case basis. So it'll be a puzzle, especially with the, that Truman piece with 124 kiddos that are on permit. So we'll be working on that.
And I think priority is going to be given to the students that are currently in those schools, but that shifting before they would permit anyone else in. I, that's what I believe.
Yeah.
You are correct. So-
Thank you.
Yes. And then also, um, with the anticipated growth that we've been able to get from our demographic specialists, um, that there is anticipated growth there on the west side, but this allows for that anticipated growth that will happen over the next five to eight years with some growth out there by the Stony Point and Morgan Creek area. So both buildings have capacity for growth as well, which is exactly where we wanted to be.
Noticed you didn't go right up the capacity in year one.
Just clarifying, this is informational, uh, this evening with the hope of bringing this back at our first board meeting in April for final recommendation and approval.
Any other questions from our board members?
Um, the only thing I would say is I think there's not many areas that, uh, would flip one way or the other depending on the options presented. Only a few little small slices. Um, so just in terms of our outreach, before we do the, uh, you know, final adoption of these, uh, boundaries, not just reaching out to the families who currently have kids, um, in those neighborhoods, but since they're such a small area, if there's any way we could, you know, reach out, um, to as many people as possible. You know, I hate advocating just to send out mail to every address in that area, but that's one easy way to do it. But that's the only thing I would add, just in terms of our outreach before we move forward with this.
We have done postcards and things like that in the past, so we could certainly consider something like that, um, of additional outreach and, um, absolutely can consider that.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a question just about that Hoover piece that's going to be moving, those 21 kids. Just, I, I know that that's a very tight community, that they've kind of built their own village around enrollment, especially of our immigrant families. And I'm wondering, like, what mechanism has been used to be able to keep those families together so they can support each other?
That's why we looked at, um, it, so if you, if you're familiar with that 16th Avenue area, there are, um, it's a series of apartment complexes. So we looked at it kind of by apartment complex by apartment complex and so that we made sure that we kept a very tight, um, boundary around that. And so, uh, what we've learned a lot with Hoover is through the community school workers and best practices. So we're already anticipating shared practices, uh, within our system um, so that, um, the West Willow community can learn from the Hoover community, how we can do best practice wraparound services and hopefully strengthen and broaden that whole area, bringing multiple communities together to support our families. So going to learn from our shared best practice.
That's excellent. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Also really appreciative of the input sessions, all the stakeholders that were involved, um, from staff to community members, families. That is excellent involvement. Thank you.
Any other questions at all? Thank you. But before we end today, uh, Scott, Director Reesinger, could you raise your hand too? He is our newest school board member and I want to thank him for joining us. And we truly look forward to working with you. So we wanted to make sure people knew who you were and then also to welcome you aboard to, uh, uh, to our district and, and, and to step up and to provide us with assistance, uh, throughout these next several months. So I thank you and I'm sure on behalf of the other board members, they, they are thankful too that you are here with us. But I wanted to make sure people knew who you, who you were.
Thank you very much. Uh, I really look forward to it and I thank you and the, uh, rest of the board for, uh, selecting me. It's an honor and, uh, look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you. With no further business, we stand adjourned. Thank you. And try to go out and enjoy this great weather we're having. Have a good-